Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, now we are on to item forty-seven. And we have our student board member Ricky Gill to talk to us about this item. Ricky?
Can you hear me now? Okay, thank you.
You sound like the ad.
Sign me up for Verizon right now. First of all, I think this is a very important item on our agenda. We should give these students our painstaking attention because they've put in tireless work over the past few days in Sacramento to further our cause of public education reform. And they've got some novel ideas that I think we should give our respect, our attention to. And they really have an engagement, a love for public service that's indicated by the kind of passion that they've put forth over the past few days. So if we can give them our attention, I think that's the least we can do and hopefully respect their ideals, their convictions. They're really honorable people for coming. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, and we have the presentation to start, and you have your order worked out? Welcome to the State Board of Education.
Good morning. My name is Nicholas Neuer, and I'm a student at Silverado High School in Victorville, California. And I serve as the State President for the California Association of Student Councils. On behalf of the California Association of Student Councils and the Student Advisory Board on Education, I would like to express our gratitude for the opportunity to share our recommendations with the State Board of Education. It is truly an honor for our student-run, student-led organization, which develops skilled, ethical, and sensitive leaders who are given the tools of youth empowerment, to present to you what we feel are important implementations for the California education system. It is now my pleasure to introduce the Director of the Student Advisory Board on Education, Ms. Laura Takasugi of North Hollywood High School.
Good morning. Thank you so much for this opportunity this morning. And the Student Advisory Board on Education, a program of the California Association of Student Councils, would like to extend the following commendations. To Mr. Jack O'Connell, the California State Superintendent of Public Education, for his time and commitment to encouraging the voice of students of California. To the entire State Board of Education, for pursuing a relationship with students to help the education in California progress toward positive change. To Ms. Rebecca Parker, the Education Program Consultant of the State Board of Education, for her invaluable knowledge as well as her desire to promote students into influential positions. To Mr. Ricky Gill, the Student Board Member on the State Board of Education, for his hard work and determination to give students an influential voice by representing the students of California. I would also like to say that these 2004 Student Advisory Board on Education proposals are dedicated to Lorelei Lenhart. She is a past delegate of the Student Advisory Board on Education and a counselor of the California Association of Student Councils and a great friend to everyone, and she will be missed. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the Board. I am Jonathan Peterson from Lower Lake High School in Lake County, and I'm presenting on the issue of a Students' Bill of Rights. In the school environment, students are granted with unique rights. The right to have fully stocked and open bathrooms, to have cellphones on campus, to not be harassed are all rights guaranteed to the students. However, a majority of the students are not enlightened on their rights. It is left up to the students across California to sift through the entire education code just to find out if they have the right to use the bathroom or not. Without conveying the rights to students, all educators and students involved in the educational process are left at a severe disadvantage. We recommend that the State Board of Education re-initiate the task force created by Delane Easton regarding a Student Bill of Rights and distribute it to every school district. This task force would include students, teachers, administrators, and members of such organizations regarding rights such as the ACLU. This would involve every perspective regarding student rights and an effective foundation in formulating this Student Bill of Rights. The Bill of Rights would be a vital asset to each and every student, ensuring that they are respected in the school atmosphere. Not only does a Student Bill of Rights benefit the students, it benefits the educators as well. By establishing this task force, all educators and students will be on level ground regarding student rights, and the confusion and inconsistency found across the state will cease to exist. As a State Board, you can implement this task force to ensure each and every right is defended by schools across the state of California. I recommend to the Board to work diligently at not only providing students with various rights, but also to implement these rights and ensure that all students and educators are fully cognizant of those rights. Even though the rights of the students are inscribed in the law, they're infringed upon. An example of this is in a student's physical education class. Once everyone had completed their competency in push-ups, the instructor praised a multitude of students. This student, on the other hand, was verbally harassed for failing to complete her push-up requirements. When she exited the classroom with tears filling her eyes, the teacher wanted to know what her problem was. Without trying to resolve the situation, the instructor pinned all the blame on the student. The verbal abuse this student received clearly illustrates that the rights of students are constantly being violated. How was this student to know that her rights were violated? Is she to find a copy of the education code and in those thousands of pages, find where the law is located? If there was a Student Bill of Rights, this person would be able to skim over one page and see exactly what her rights are. This provides the student with a chance to succeed without having to worry about the harassment or embarrassment in the classroom or other consequences. Every student, parent, and educator needs to have a copy of this Bill of Rights readily available. With a copy of this, students will finally be able to comprehend their rights as students and become improved citizens of this country as a result of their newfound knowledge. The Board's assumption of the task of distributing the Student Bill of Rights is vital towards giving all students an equal opportunity to succeed. Implementing the Student Bill of Rights into an orientation period, or as a requirement in the student handbook, would be vital as well in educating students on the values of their rights in the classroom. The State Board needs to work at implementing these rights into every school in the state of California. A Students' Bill of Rights would be vital for each and every student and educator throughout California. By developing and re-initiating this task force to create this aforementioned Bill of Rights, teachers, students, and organizations alike would be able to cooperate to ensure that the students' needs are met. The distribution and implementation of this Bill of Rights will be unique in providing the students of California with an understanding of the rights needed for every student to gain an equal opportunity in reaching their full potential. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions, board members? Suzanne? I have a question, and this is going to indicate how old I feel sometimes. But you mentioned cellphones, and I'm really curious, because that was something that when I was in school wasn't an issue. And I'm curious what happens when I'm in a movie theater or something and the cellphone rings and it's so disruptive. How do you guys deal with that in school environments? And then a bigger question for me related to that is, kind of, when I think about student rights, I also think about what are student responsibilities? And would you consider expanding your task force to grapple with student rights and student responsibilities in the same issue? I mean, the cellphone thing would be one example, because if you have that right, what's your responsibility?
Okay. Well, first, on the issue of the cellphones, that in fact has been an issue, and it was tackled by, say, a few years past. And it was, in fact, later implemented through legislation that cellphones are, in fact, allowed on campus, but not allowed to disrupt the classroom setting. And on the issue of responsibilities for students, I think that'll be a vital part to this. An example I see is on the issue of search and seizure in the school setting. I think it's confused for students about if they can be searched or not. And if they understand that, in fact, school officials, in certain circumstances with probable cause, can search the students if need be, that they understand that the whole thing goes both ways. And I think that is one of the responsibilities that they would gain from this Bill of Rights. So absolutely, the responsibilities between educators and students, it needs to be a joint effort. If we don't have educators involved, it won't be a valuable resource.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Justin Lamb. I am a junior at Bellarmine College Preparatory in San Jose, California. And this presentation will focus on the distribution of categorical funding within school districts. Now, contrary to what we as a group thought five days ago, the system is actually working. Our original proposal centered around...
That is really good to know. Thank you so much.
That's a good thing. That's a good thing. Our original proposal centered around equal funding. We thought the problem was that the money wasn't there, that the money was not available for schools. Apparently, we were wrong. On the contrary, we value average daily attendance because it allot's the same amount of money to a student for going to school, no matter where he or she lives in the state of California. We value categorical funding because it gives students even more money to build the marketable skills they need. The problem that we see, however, is that there is an overlap in categoricals. Some districts in California misuse categorical funding, and consequently, one categorical may lack while the other rises. It's not that this is just happening within one or two school districts, but that it is happening within multiple districts, warranting a second look by the State Board of Education. Therefore, we, the Student Advisory Board on Education, recommend that the State Board of Education analyze how districts actually spend categoricals, then compare these with the best spending practices of other districts. We urge the State Board of Education to take a closer look at how categoricals are funded in California's districts. As an example, the Oakland Unified School District misallocated construction funds for the completion of schools that they were allotted. As a result, they had to request $100 million in credit from the state legislature, and they specifically asked for a state creditor to come in and help them allocate these funds. Cases like the Oakland Unified School District show that we need a more direct approach to districts that helps them on a statewide level, and gives them the resources to properly allocate funds for the betterment of California's schools. We want the State Board of Education to examine the best practices in districts so districts that can improve their spending may know how to do so. As an example, we can look at both the Oakland Unified School District and the California Agricultural Teachers Association, which controls agriculture... or not, I'm sorry, does not control, but rather recommends how agricultural funding is distributed to different districts. To testify to CATA's success, Daniel Schultz, a student in this delegation, said that in his school alone, 900 students are entered in the agricultural program at Porterville High School, and that the agricultural program has been one of the few in the state that has not faltered despite the recent turmoil in educational budgets. Therefore, looking at examples such as the CATA can improve California's schools and allow us to take a different approach to how categoricals are funded. The reason why this is such an important issue to us is that categoricals give every student a chance at equal education by funding programs that directly cater to specific needs. Misgiving happens because of the unequal proportioning that occurs when a student falls into multiple categoricals. For example, a student may be involved in both English language learning and technology, and may spend five hours in each. However, let's say the technology is charged for all 10 of those hours, meaning that technology has less money to work with in the long run for time a student that was never there, and the English language program is not better off either. Cases like these show that money is not being given to the individual needs of a student, and that the categoricals are not addressing all the needs of a student as they were intended to do. Let's go ahead and improve the categorical program because it puts students on the road to building their marketable skills for college, vocational school, and life. Moreover, categorical funding resources give students the tools to learn, exciting students about learning, and showing them that no matter where they come from, no matter what their background, no matter what abilities or disabilities they may have, they can have an equal chance at education because we live in the great state of California. Specifically, how we recommend that the Board do this is to examine how districts actually spend on categoricals, how CATA and other organizations like it operate, and possibly to even conduct a study on what it means for students. In conclusion, the State Board of Education should take a look at how districts fund categoricals and find out what the best practices are in the state. Let's emulate the success that Daniel Schultz and his fellow Porterville Unified School District students experience. Let's go for the vision that every California student can pride themselves on their state's educational system. Let's take away the obstructions and roadblocks of funding issues and give each categorical its own path so that students may better embark on the road to success.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions?
Isn't Bellarmine a private school?
Yes, but that still doesn't... that still means that the educational issues faced by our state are accessible. And in fact, I find it personally exciting to know that there's a whole different world of education that I don't get to see every day at my school.
So how did you get so involved in this, of going to a private school?
It's a long story. But the fact that I'm here now is one of the great opportunities that California students get, and I'm proud to be here, and I know that's a sign that at least some things are, in fact, flourishing in our state.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, questions? Okay, next presenter, please.
Good morning, members of the Board. I am Evan Natwick of Hopeful High School, and today I'm representing the Student Advisory Board's Education on Regional Occupation Programs and Fine Arts Credibility. As the workplace becomes more competitive and businesses continue to increase their employment standards, our students are in dire need of a more career-oriented education in order for them to lead successful lives in their career choices. Consequently, we, the students, would like to expand the emphasis of ROP and fine arts programs. The student's recommendation to the Board is as follows. The State Board of Education should establish the validity and credibility of regional occupation programs, or ROP, and the fine arts programs through the School Accountability Report Card, also known as SARC. By expanding the assessment of the availability, quality, and effectiveness of the ROP programs, this could be achieved by adding a more comprehensive evaluation of the ROP and fine arts programs, which makes schools strive to emulate those schools with higher SARC scores, therefore influencing them to develop a more comprehensive ROP and fine arts program. Over the past 30 years, there's been a decline of 60% in all tech and career-oriented programs. My school has personally felt the effects of this. In 2002, our school had two ROP business programs, Computerized Office Systems and Accounting. The Computerized Office Systems program taught students how to draft propositions, take down notes, increase their public speaking skills, and problem-solving, whereas the accounting helped them balance budgets and apply advanced math skills to real-life situations. Unfortunately, in 2003, our ROP programs were cut, and the students were put into remedial courses. This was an unjust decision by our school, and the students were denied the opportunity to gain proficiency in their career choices. No longer were they receiving the crucial incorporation of core class skills into real-life situations, and beyond that, the school lost $35,000 in ROP incentive funds. However, for those schools whose ROP and finance programs are not at risk of being cut, I believe these schools could benefit from a possible expansion of their programs. Take, for example, Stephanie James of Santa Benito High School. Her school's choral program gives equal credit to all students based on participation. However, the students who have an interest in music as a career choice are left without a course that would tailor to their specific needs. That is why the students have come up with this plan of action. The State Board should encourage SARC to expand the fine arts and ROP sections of their reports and allocate a given number of points to these components, thereby increasing the school's opinions of the programs. Consequently, the State Board would also need to establish a specific point system on which to evaluate the effectiveness and rigor of these programs. Furthermore, the State Board should encourage schools to readily supply and/or post the annual SARC scores, which the parents and students of that school could receive upon request. We understand that the Board will obviously have some concerns for the fiscal application of this proposal, so we, the students, have taken this into consideration and provided this fiscal analysis. Addressing the disproduction of the annual SARC scores, we believe that local schools could pay for it, and the benefit of it is that parents and students will have a greater understanding of their school's performance levels. The implementation of ROP and fine arts programs... ROP programs are covered under the legislature. There's funds allocated to them already through the Workforce Investment Act of 1998, a federal-level legislature. And fine arts programs also, I believe, should be put under that umbrella. The benefits of this is that it would train more competent workers and make our workplace more effective. On a lighter note, ROP and fine arts programs make students be able to excel in their courses and gives them more self-confidence so they would want to come to school, which would increase your ADAs or average daily attendance rates, which would allocate more funds to the school. In conclusion, students are seeking professional career training and are not receiving the career-based education that they need to excel in our demanding workforce. These disenfranchised students are in desperate need of these programs. Our proposal is essential to requiring the means to fill these needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Janine.
I'd like to encourage you to talk to your Congress, and currently, the reauthorization of the Perkins Act and technical education changes are being debated in Washington, D.C. And since that's where the overwhelming amount of dollars that we use for ROP programs come from, perhaps you ought to talk to Congress and weigh in on this matter since it's being debated in the next session, so...
I'll take that into consideration. Thank you. Any further questions?
Ruth, I just would like to say that you touch on two issues that I think are very important, and that is vocational education, which I believe is something that we need to focus on. And in this state, because we focus so much on getting our students into CS, California, UC system and Cal State system, and I think vocational education has kind of been on the back burner, but also in terms of fine arts because it is a career path for many of the students in California. I think it's very interesting that you want to tie this to SARC, which we discussed yesterday, and the idea that adding a checklist rather than a narrative about what's going on. That was sort of...
...the theme of the last couple of days.
I'm sorry. But it's quite interesting that in that report, that is essentially a year later than the school year that it's talking about, that it gets posted. It does get posted. It is available for parents, that it does get done by each school, that you would like to have these added to it, and I think that's something that we should consider, and I appreciate your points of view. Thank you.
Do you see many of your colleagues, the college-bound, like you are, taking the ROP and current technical education classes?
Yes, I have. Currently, we don't have an ROP business program, but we do have, in our school district of mine, we have a mass media program, which entails web design, video, audio, and it's very essential for students to learn this at a younger age and even in high school that they broaden what they know of these things. So when they go into college, if they wish to pursue a career in mass media or multimedia, that they are well-prepared when they reach the college.
Which district do you come from?
I am from a Imperial Valley... the Hopeful Unified School District in the Imperial Valley, Region 12.
We have been able to... one of our success stories here is we've been able to nearly double the number of career and technical education classes that are now considered for admission to UC and CSU, because to me, the college-bound or the career-bound should not be mutually exclusive. Certainly, it should not be a decision that you have to make at 14 or 15 when you're a freshman or sophomore.
I think we all thank you for... the Board for doing that.
Thank you very much. Next presenter, please.
Hello and good morning. My name is Leah Lucetti, and I'm from Montgomery High School in Santa Rosa, California. I'm here today to discuss programs and resources to aid teacher instruction of state standards. Improvement in this area would provide many positive effects and would benefit all students equally and with minimal costs. This will in turn create many opportunities for teachers to obtain the support and information that is crucial to preparing the students of California. We recommend to the State Board of Education that extensive programs and resources be established so it can be guaranteed that teachers can understand and utilize California's curriculum, and they may effectively convey and teach the standards. It is within my personal experience that I'm constantly seeing my peers being advanced to the next level of education without mastering the previous level. These students are consistently suffering from this problem by being held accountable for standards they have not had the opportunity to learn and therefore set up for failure. An example of this is Austin Hall from Mount Eden High School in Hayward, California. He is an example of a student who could not meet the expectations required by the state due to the lack of ability of teachers to teach the curriculum and follow the standards the state so strictly stands behind. It seems that in cases like this, the teachers might not fully understand what is expected in teaching the standards. Austin had, in result, exceptionally low standardized test scores and failed to meet the necessary standards of education in order to graduate high school and enter the workforce. This is an unfortunate experience, however, it is one we can learn from and do all in our power to ensure that this does not continue to happen. We are asking you to create a new professional development program in which instructors are trained by the district based on a created syllabus outlining methods for teaching the standards more effectively. These programs will provide innovative learning techniques such as hands-on learning applications, structured activities, and example suggested labs and essay topics that comply with the standards, in-class application to real life, and class discussion questions. Lastly, we are asking that a website be established for teachers, which is including, but not limited to, forms for communication between teachers, tips for teaching the standards, personal testimonies, and suggested learning plans. To get these requests implemented would mean equal opportunities for students to succeed. There is clearly room for improvement in the standardized test scores among California students, and with our plan of action, we believe we can make a drastic change on how many students score at and above standard level. We need to look to the teachers to provide support for the students to accomplish the goal of excellence in the classroom, and therefore must provide easily accessible and substantial resources and support that teachers need to effectively instruct their students on the state curriculum standards. We are encouraging that the members of the State Board of Education take into consideration our proposal and help create new professional development programs. These programs will more specifically and concisely instruct the teachers on how to convey the standards to the students in a manner which is beneficial to both parties. This, too, will create a plethora of active resources the teachers can use in the classroom. This will increase the quality of education that students develop, receive, exiting high school, and will help them develop the various characteristics that are essential to succeeding and the rigors of America's society.
Thank you very much. Comments? Joe?
Do you have an opinion about whether or not the standards are too hard, just right, or too easy?
Right now, I think that they are just right. We just need to enforce the standards and help the teachers better convey them to the students, and then we can see whether or not they're too hard or too easy.
Very good. I like that. Thank you very much for your presentation. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, members of the Board. My name is Christopher Kefarian, and I attend the Poi School UCSD. Today, I would like to discuss with you the concerning of overcrowding in public school classrooms and how best to cope with it. In our overcrowded classrooms, we are not receiving the personal attention that we need to excel both academically and socially. Without personal attention, performance levels decrease and personal issues are less easily identified. Throughout the state of California, action is being taken to build new schools to deal with overcrowding in classrooms. In the meantime, it is crucial that action is taken to help students deal with the large class sizes. The Student Advisory Board on Education proposes that the State Board of Education create a guideline for which all California high schools implement an advisory class to help students with overcrowded classrooms. This innovative approach to advisory will give students psychological comfort that they need to succeed, teach them the learning styles at which they learn best, and how to apply them to their classes, and help them realize their real academic and intellectual abilities. Throughout California, students find themselves in crowded classrooms that make it difficult for them to express their individuality and learn at their own pace. With limited time and resources, teachers are often unable to provide each student with the personal attention that they would like. Currently, in some schools, classes do not have teachers that know all of the names of their students. It's not because the teachers do not care, it's just because of the sheer number of students. The regularly scheduled advisory classes are a low-cost solution to deal with the overcrowding because they provide a superior learning environment for students. I've seen firsthand how a class similar to our proposed advisory class has affected students. The average class size at my school is 30, much like the average at a high school in California. A normal class period, it is difficult for the teacher to get around to each student and talk to them on a personal level to see what they're understanding and not understanding. The advisory class at my school gives the... an opportunity to the students to meet with their teachers and their fellow peers to get an understanding of what they're learning in class. We also do a counseling session where issues that we face as students are discussed and how we can prepare ourselves better for after-high school. One of my fellow students, Brian, was doing poorly before he came to my school and before he was introduced to the advisory program. He saw, after he came to our school, that he saw a difference in the quality of work that he produced and the amount of knowledge that he grasped from his courses. The personal attention that he received increased, his self-confidence, which in turn improved his academics. I've been in my advisory class for three years with the same group of students and the same advisor. We've sort of become like a family. We can see each other's strengths and weaknesses and work together to become stronger individuals. Our advisor is able to tap into our personal lives and help us with our problems. My personal experience just goes to show how such an advisory class could really affect students. The advisory class that we propose will touch on the multiple problems that high school students face. The class will meet bimonthly... The class will meet bimonthly for an hour, and the course would include topics such as identifying learning styles and how to apply them, college and career advice, and teen issues facing students in schools. We recommend that these advisories have curriculum to teach the student the most effective learning style and how they can apply them to their classes. This would help them better comprehend the material that they learn in class and retain the information so they can keep up with the standardized curriculum while working at their own pace. An advisory class would not only enrich the academics, but also boost the self-esteem and personal confidence of the student by giving them the personalized attention that they really need to succeed. While, when counselors have 500 or even 1,000 students at school, it's often hard for them to get to know each of their students on a personal note. With an advisory teacher, each advisory would be able to support and encourage their students to the best of their ability. With community members and college students involved, it would add to the personal attention and also the family-like atmosphere that is within the class. They would provide another view on life and help students realize what their goals are. It is critical that the State Board of Education creates a guideline for advisory classes to help students cope with the overcrowding in their classes. The class would not only enrich their learning, but it would also affect their self-esteem and personal confidence. I'd like you to imagine for just one second if we had a state where all the students could better understand their classes and they could have a sense of belonging, even in the midst of large class sizes. This is possible with our advisory class. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Comments?
I really appreciate the topic and your very thorough treatment of it. I've just recently had the opportunity to visit some advisories and have seen some that were really focused and had a great curriculum, and I've seen some that were totally unfocused and what appeared to me to be a complete waste of time. And so I really appreciate your focusing in on curriculum and the importance of that. And I'm curious if you would tell us, from your experience in advisories, you must have had a day that was really, really helpful, and you must have had some days that were really like, what am I doing here? And what makes the difference for you?
I think the difference comes from both the advisor and the students. The students have to have that will to learn, and I think is everyone, all students in California have that will that they want to pursue a success, they want to pursue a career, and the will from the students contributes to that. The environment within the classroom helps to aid the students. So you learn a lot through the class, and yes, you do have some of those days where you're like, this is a total waste of time, but the amount of those days are very few. And the advice and what you learn from that class overpowers the other, those poor days that you might have within that class. But a lot of the poor days come from not understanding your classes or overstressed. So the class, the advisory class would help students with those kind of problems.
Any other, Ricky?
Yeah, Chris, I want to say it's very complete presentation. Just have a question for you. Do you feel that we're addressing the byproduct of another problem, such as larger class sizes, as if should we direct our funds and our attention toward solving that problem first so we don't have to worry about advisories or at least implementing that new program, which is more of a result of inaction in other areas?
I think that it is crucial that we create more classrooms to decrease the amount of sizes in the classes, but it also, we need to implement programs that the students would be able to better understand the curriculum and the course. In the meantime, while classes are being built to deal with the overcrowding, it is crucial that these students get the information, the knowledge that they need to succeed, and the advisory program would provide that for them.
Okay, and you brought up a great point about student to counselor ratios. What is that at your school?
My school, we have 500 students to a counselor.
Okay, and is that too much in your estimation?
I personally think it's a little bit too much. The counselor does not have enough time to get around to each of the students and know them on a personal level to really help them. But the advisor is like, kind of like a counselor. They're able to help them on a personal note and maybe even help them with career, college, whatever they want to pursue after high school.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Our final presenter, I believe.
My name is Blaze Patzkowski, and I'm a senior at La Mirada High School, which is in Los Angeles County but on the border of Orange. And today, I'm going to be discussing sexual orientation education in public high schools, or more specifically, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning, or LGBTQ education. First, I'm going to present a few statistics from the 1997 Safe Schools Report to basically illustrate the gravity of the problem that we're currently facing. First, 34% of gay, lesbian, and bisexual students surveyed had been the target of verbal assault at school. Second, self-identified gay, lesbian, and bisexual students are twice as likely as straight students to feel unsafe or afraid at school. And finally, gay, lesbian, and bisexual students are three to four times as likely as straight students to report having attempted suicide in the past year. It is with these problems in mind that we find the importance of sexual curriculum education. Although discussion of sexual orientation and gender identity is a very controversial issue, education on the topic is essential. The Student Advisory Board on Education recommends that the State Board of Education integrate sexual orientation curriculum regarding LGBTQ issues into California State Social Science, Language Arts, Science, or Health curriculum. The AB 537 Task Force Report on School Environments came to the conclusion that California needs to work to prevent discrimination and violence based on actual or perceived sexual orientation and gender identity by creating state content and curriculum standards. These standards should provide guidelines for making reference to LGBTQ figures and related events, concepts, and issues, tears the words of Assembly Bill 537. Clearly, education on LGBTQ issues is essential. In the 1970s, as the AIDS epidemic broke out, homosexuals were largely blamed and viewed as responsible. A lack of understanding of LGBTQ brought harassment and alienation upon them. However, it is now common knowledge that anyone can contract and spread AIDS, not just homosexuals. In the same way that this myth about homosexuality was proven to be just that, a myth, further education is essential to disprove other myths. However, sufficient action has not yet been taken. Today, LGBTQ students are still being ostracized because, one, students see them as acting out of perverseness; second, sexual insecurity still does exist; but finally, because students simply do not understand issues pertaining to LGBTQ students. It is for this reason that we recommend that LGBTQ issues be addressed within state standards. This would increase students' awareness and understanding of LGBTQ students. We understand the importance of equality and of making everyone feel comfortable, but further education will help to achieve this goal. While this may be a controversial issue, education is necessary. An emphasis on LGBTQ issues will help these students feel more comfortable in school and promote tolerance by other students. LGBTQ students should not be the objects of verbal attacks. They should not feel unsafe in school, and they should not be more likely than straight students to attempt suicide. LGBTQ curriculum is a necessary step towards promoting comfort and tolerance in California high schools.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments? Ricky?
Sure. Got a question for you. First of all, great presentation. Why not promote character education as a whole? I think that's something that, that we could probably get done as far as having a greater impact over a broader number of issues. You would promote tolerance not just with respect to this issue, but with regard to other differences cultural and otherwise. Do you think that's a viable option?
Yeah, I think that's a possible alternative, but I think that one of the most important things to understand is that now, many teachers really do focus a lot of their attention on character issues and teaching morals and issues of that relation. But what we are not currently doing is really educating people and basically showing that homosexuals are a normal part of our community, too. For example, simply commenting on the fact that an author that we're studying in our literature class was a homosexual is going to help to give the illusion that these people are not so foreign, and that they are regular citizens in the United States. So while that is an important idea, and while character issues is something that really should be discussed in school, issues that are specific to homosexuals really need to be discussed also.
Joe?
Actually, I was just going to say that it's quite amazing that your students decided that this would be one of your hot topics that you would present, and I just want to congratulate all of you for being willing to talk about it and for bringing it to our attention today.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments before I close it up? Okay. I want to draw everyone's attention to this handout that we got, and it contains the recommendations of our student members here, and some very thoughtful analysis and challenging ideas. You know, so often, this room is filled with adults, so it is a real pleasure and a privilege to have all of you come here before us with your ideas, your intellectual curiosity, your commitment and goodwill. I really love hearing from all of you, and I see some future leaders here, and perhaps one day, some of you will be sitting up where we sit now. So again, thank you so much for your presentation. Oh, Ricky?
Ruth, I just want to say, as you said, this is a huge reminder for all of us that this is our main constituency right here. This is our constituency, the 6.3 million students, and this is a segment of leaders from that population who really want to push new and innovative ideas forward. It's a very healthy perspective that they've given us, and I'm really honored that they could take time out of their busy lives, considering that they're missing school for this. It's really, that's not the only reason they came, that they're missing school, I know that, but...
Yes.
But really, I'm very, very proud to see you guys here. Thanks so much for coming.
Right. Thank you very much, and we do appreciate you all coming.
And the Student Advisory Board on Education would really like to thank you all for giving your time and opening this forum of discussion for us. So thank you.
Thanks so much. Round of applause for our members. Okay. All right, we are now moving on to item 48. And... Oh, sure. Okay, 60 seconds. And while I, while I give them a little time to move furniture, I want to announce that we will be going into closed session for 10 minutes after item 48.
They can present all of this, and they do all the research. Is on all of this. And find a vehicle. This is pretty impressive. I'm on the board. And Cass, I was...
What's that? This is your... Kind of leadership feeling. Yeah, I know, it is actually. I spent a few days, part of Saturday, Sunday, Monday, too.
Yeah.
But learning better and giving confidence. It gives them a break from the...
Work before play.
Close session. Okay, then 46. Forty... If I could, okay. Jack, let's maybe make one announcement. Everybody, and Ruth, just take a look at this, because I know you have planes and leave at different times. After this item 48, I think we were talking about, we're going to go into closed session approximately 10 minutes. Then we will have item 46, item 45, item 49, and then we adjourn. So just...
48, then we'll have 40...
We're doing 48 now with Jack, Superintendent O'Connell. Then we go into closed session, approximately 10 minutes. We will have item 46, which is Livermore. We have item 45, which is supplemental service providers. And item 49, somebody tell me, is...
Petition to amend regulations.
Petition to amend regulations is a very, very short item, and then we will be done. So is everybody clear on that order, and we're all set?
This is the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. The California's presidential awardees have joined really a premier group of science and mathematics teachers, leaders who have been recognized and received the nation's highest honor for math and science teachers in grades K through 12. It's a program that was established by the White House in 1983, and it's really comparable to the Nobel Awards for K through 12 math and science teachers. The finalists are chosen from the National Selection Committee. They receive a citation signed by the President of the United States, they receive a $10,000 grant, and they also receive two tickets, round trip to Washington, D.C., where they participate in numerous meetings and meet with several members of the administration and Congress.
I'm sorry, Superintendent O'Connell, I just want, the same way we played musical chairs before, those people that are involved with this particular agenda item, if you're not involved, and can make way for those folks who are participating in this agenda item. Well, I love the participation. I wish we had more room. Excuse me, Jack, I just wanted to have those folks here.
Good. Well, okay, we got everybody? I think the families here, your families, you got everybody here? Everybody inside that wants to be inside? The first one then that we have from this distinguished program, we have two of our 2003 awardees and four finalists. The first awardee would be the 2003 Secondary Mathematics awardee, and it would be Anna England. She is from Lakeview Middle School from the Parajo Valley Unified School District. She's a National Board Certified Teacher and teaches eighth grade mathematics, mentor teacher, and department chair. Madam President, if you... She's just very well distinguished, has helped to be the former Math Project Director, Mentor Teacher, Department Chair. Madam President, if you... She's just very well distinguished, has helped to be the former Math Project Director, Mentor Teacher, Department Chair. And Anna, would you like to introduce your family? We'd like to present you with this certificate.
Thank you. I have my, my mother here with me, Helena Serpas. My father was supposed to come, but he was ill today, so that's who I brought.
Oh, great. Okay, good, good. Well, it's nice to have you here, and we'd like to present you this certificate, signed by the President Green and myself.
Thank you.
Good, good. Get in here. Ruthie, get in here.
They're going. I think they're going to the White House. Or maybe, no, I don't know.
Okay, great. Good, thank you. Thank you very much, Anna. The second awardee is Janet English, and no, she's not teaching English. She's a science teacher from Serrano Intermediate School, Saddleback Valley Unified School District, eighth grade science teacher, and helps students prepare videos that have appeared on PBS, and has really helped smooth transitions. When I read the biography last night, she's really helped smooth transitions for students from high school to enjoy success in college and beyond. Would you like to introduce your family?
Yes, my mother is here, Harriet Rook, and our principal, Linda Garza.
Oh, great. Should we get a quick picture here, and then we'll ask them to come forward? Get in here. Get your hand on that roof. My wallet. Do you want your family up there, too?
Mom? Yeah. I'm sorry, I was just...
Hang on to that. Oh, good shape. Very good shape.
I put my arm around him.
Good shape. Go for my wallet. You'd be disappointed. Congratulations. I'll see you at lunch, okay? Good, 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 good. Now, we have our four finalists who are here for this year. The first is Tap Hancock from Wayside Elementary School from Bakersfield City School District, a former Kern County Math Teacher of the Year and a Fulbright Award Scholar for 2001, 2002. Tap?
Hi.
See you. How are you? Good, good. President Green?
I'd like to introduce my inspiration of who I am today, and she came all the way from North Carolina to be with me today. And that is my mom, Mrs. Hancock.
Oh, Mrs. Hancock, come on up. We got a picture. That's very nice. Boy, that's a long, long field trip. Great. Thank you very much. Thanks, thanks so much, you guys. You get your certificate, Mrs. Hancock. They won't feed you lunch without that today. The next one is Valeri? Valerie, Valerie Rose Piver. Is that close? From Hillview Crest Elementary School, New Haven Unified School District, third grade teacher with class size reduction, right?
Yes, sir.
There. With the Alameda Contra Costa 1996 Math Teacher of the Year, and on her own helped implement family... And our next recipient here for 2004 is elementary science finalist Katrina Williams from Steinbeck Elementary, Central Unified School District, fourth grade teacher, past Teacher of the Year, mentor teacher, president of the Central California Science Teachers Association. Katrina? Congratulations. Ruthie Green?
Thank you.
Picture with me, and we'll ask you to introduce your family. And I'm now here with me today, my husband, Dave Williams. Picture Dave?
Also my inspiration.
Right there. Thank you. See you at lunch. Have fun, guys. And we also have Mary Louise Wolf from McKinley Elementary Schools from Central Unified School District, second grade science teacher, a mentor teacher, and has provided over 20 workshops for other science teachers in different counties. A 2001 science finalist for the Presidential Award. It's nice to meet you. Did you meet Ruth Green?
Yes, we did.
Did you have family here?
Yes, I do. I have my husband, who married me and brought me to California.
Oh, great, oh, good call.
Lucky lover, thank you. And also my principal, she's going to hand this here.
Sheila, you want to come up with us? Here, well, surround your protege here. Great, that's it, right? So good. And there's a luncheon that we're invited to later, and people like Joe never miss a free lunch. I think it's at noon, and this is just a great group of folks. I think members of the board know this is a super program. Maybe one more round of applause for all of our recipients and awardees. Okay? Good. All right, thank you.
Teaching science and math. Hello? What? How about discrimination? So I'm going to record you. I will make sure that the mics are still on when we're doing closed sessions. So remember, they're still on until I turn them off.
Okay, we are now going into closed session for approximately 10 minutes, and that requires the room to be cleared. Thank you. Yes, bye.
Is there any way we can open the machine? The rebel.
All right. Poor baby. Thank you, everyone, for coming in and out, in and out today. We are now on item 46. And Deb Connolly?
Thank you. Item 46 is an appeal by the Livermore Valley Charter School petitioners to the State Board. They propose to establish a K through 8 school that would eventually serve approximately 720 students. The petition was denied by the Livermore Valley Joint Unified School District and by the Alameda County Office of Education, and therefore, the appeal was submitted to the State Board. The Advisory Commission on Charter Schools reviewed this petition at its October 4th meeting and voted to recommend approval of the petition to the State Board. We had some fairly minor recommendations in our analysis. This was actually one of the most complete petitions we've ever seen on paper. We had some recommendations relating to the number of founders that could get admissions preferences, and they also had proposed to have staff on the Governance Council that would be voting members. We've made some recommendations in those areas. The Advisory Commission agreed with compromise on the admissions preference for founders, and I believe the school is, or the petitioners are fine with our recommendations. I'd be happy to go through any of them if you'd like.
Board comments, questions? Is that --
Just a question, Deborah. In your analysis of the charter and the procedures that they've gone through, you felt comfortable with the recommendations, obviously, of ACCS as well as the prior board actions, and were addressed in terms of whatever concerns were expressed?
Yes, I do feel comfortable with the Advisory Commission's recommendations. The district had some, I think it was partly a matter of timing. They, the petitioners had submitted their proposal to the district in May, and they had not identified a facility, and so I think there was some question about whether or not they could identify a facility and get a lease in time to start. They had originally proposed to start this fall. Now they're proposing to start a year from now, and so that was part of the problem, was the timing. The district didn't feel they had enough. I believe they have applied for Prop 39 facilities or will apply. They also included in their petition three letters of commitment from individual facility owners that they could also lease other facilities. They're proposing to start with the K through five, I believe K through six this first year next fall, and then add seventh and eighth grades to that.
The Sopa issue was also addressed, or is making good progress?
Actually, yes. I was just talking to the petitioners' attorneys before, during the break, and they actually have an agreement with the district that denied them, and they, the district will treat them as a school of the district, and it's just a matter of working out the MOU on that, is my understanding.
I just have a -- I'm looking at the State Board of Education Charter School Appeals findings. Items one and two were checked as concerns. Says the charter school presents an unsound educational program for pupils to be enrolled in the charter school, and the petitioners are demonstratably unlikely to successfully implement the programs that are forth in the petition. Can you clarify that for me?
I believe that, actually, these headings may be a little confusing. These are the grounds on which a charter school petition can be denied. They are not our findings, but it was only an attempt to lay out the five grounds on which a charter school petition could be denied.
They're X-ed while the other ones are not.
Pardon me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, and we just checked those because we just had some minor concerns, but not that we think the educational program is unsound.
It's a non-process that is set up under law, and so it's not their doing. If we end up denying it, those are the reasons we use, but it's not a reason you have to go with it and approve it. So it gives you flexibility to make a choice. If we were to find yes on all, then we have no choice but to approve it. So for the staff to preserve our flexibility and judgment, they generally find something that we would hang it on.
I'd like to move staff approval.
Okay.
Staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation. Right, and that motion would be approve the petition by Livermore Valley Charter School to become a charter school under the oversight of the State Board of Education, conditioned on the charter, meeting the recommended conditions of operation recommended by staff in Attachment 1, pages nine to 16, and be assigned Charter Number 678.
And you'll, we'll have speakers on this?
Thank you, Deborah.
Well, the board has typically approved the charters for three-year periods of time, so that was our assumption, that this one would be approved for three years also. You have the choice to approve it up to a period of five years.
Okay, let's get a second, and then we'll open it for discussion. Second on that? Okay. Ruth?
Yes, again, I want to know, since we are, if we pass this, we would be adding another charter school to the purview of the staff, and I would like to know the capabilities of the staff to oversee this as a direct charter.
I would have to say that each one of these by themselves doesn't present a backbreaking workload, but it's the addition over time that is very consuming of our time, and I think part of the problem is that we're not doing strictly oversight, but we're also sort of functioning like a school district in some respects, because they do not have a school district to which they can go to. So I think over time, and we have, you'll probably see two or three more of these appeals in the next two or three months, and I think over time, the workload will be an issue.
Okay, excuse me, Ruth, I'm sorry. Because this is a public hearing, I'm going to switch gears a little bit, and I'm going to open the public hearing, and then we're going to have board deliberation after this, but let's go back to the comments from the proponents, please, after our staff report by Deb. Did you have any additional comments before we asked the proponents to come forward? Okay, thanks, I'm sorry. So, public speakers, proponents of the Livermore Charter?
Do you want to give them their, what their time limit will be?
If we're going to do the, sir, two minute, or --
Well, we can do like 10, 15 minutes for the whole proponents.
Right, depending on the, right. How long is your presentation, sir?
Hopefully, we're around 10 minutes.
Okay, and you represent --
Yeah, I have a couple of people, and hopefully, we're around 10 minutes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Well, at least at the moment. Madam President, distinguished board members, my name is Lon Goldstein, and I am the founder and current board president for the Livermore Valley Charter School. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come before you today and present our appeal. Livermore Valley Charter School has tried to surround itself with some of, if not the best consultants and professionals in the charter realm in order to ensure the proper educational and social development of our students, as well as the financial stability of our school. We are prepared to hire our inaugural principal, who has 27 years of administrative experience and most recently was a principal of a California distinguished elementary school, who API scores rank a 10 out of 10 statewide, and a 7 out of 10 when compared to similar schools. In order to ensure the curriculum is aligned to meet state standards and that our students are constantly challenged, yet allowed to excel in their own individual way, and that our teachers receive appropriate and timely professional development, we have hired Inside Education Group, a state-recognized leader in curriculum development as our consultant. We have formally entered into a contract with one of, if not the, leading business and development specialists in California in ed tech, and ed tech will be providing us with their full suite of back office support for operations. We have retained the foremost leading experts in charter law in California. Inspector Middleton Young and Mini is our legal counsel, and we have joined CCSA as a developer member in order to have full access to their vast array of resources. In addition to the above mentioned, we have also hired various consultants to assist us with our multi-year strategic fiscal plan, as well as our public relations. I can assure you that if we are given the opportunity to open our charter school, we will always surround ourselves with some of the best experts and consultants we can find in order to ensure the proper educational development of our students in a fiscally viable environment. And I do have to apologize for one second, I forgot something up my chair, I have to grab real quick, I apologize.